Good evening. It's 7:00 and I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here. Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, March 3rd, 2014. So moved.
Second?
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Marlin. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Bill Brown?
I have a correction on item 1D. The committee sent that to council for the May 5th meeting. That's the schedule of fees.
Okay.
So we won't do that tonight.
That's my recollection as well. Petitions and communications. I have one person, Dural Cruz. Then, we've invited Ralph Caldwell from MetCad to give a presentation because we have a discussion about the 911 system. So do you have a presentation, Ralph?
Yes, would you like me to start?
Sure.
Sure, it would be great.
And he might need 10 minutes. So is there a motion to give him 10 minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, you have 10 minutes, Ralph.
Oh, I better go fast then. Okay, thank you for having me. I'm Ralph Caldwell. I'm the Director of MetCad. I've been there about four years, a little over four years. My previous role in life was, I was a Springfield, Illinois police officer for 30 years and I retired there in 2009 as Chief of Police. So let's get started with MetCad now. I wanted to give a quick overview and then let you know how we're funded and how we're made up. Back in '79, there were three organizations that decided to join MetCad, or form MetCad. It was the City of Champaign, City of Urbana, and the University of Illinois, and it was a law enforcement agencies only. In '83, the Champaign County Sheriff's Office joined MetCad, which brought most of the law enforcement together under one roof to be dispatched. In 1988, the fire departments joined. That was Urbana, Champaign, and the rural fire departments. And then what we're planning on is July of 2014, the Village of Rantoul will be joining us with their fire department also. So currently, we dispatch for about 33 agencies. Add three more after July 2014, and we should be up to about 36. Basic 911 started in 1990. So if you picked up your hard line at home and you dialed 911, that would come to our center. So you only had to dial three digits. In 1996, if you did the same thing at home, dialed your hard line at home, we now know your location. And so that was called enhanced 911. Wireless came into the fold, and in 2006, if you picked up your wireless cellphone and dialed 911, we actually have a rough idea where you are with your cellphone. It's not as finite and detailed as what it would be with your wire line, but we know who's calling us, which phone number's calling us, and roughly where you're at. Here's a quick overview of what we look like. I have several bosses. I have the MetCad Policy Board, which Mayor Pressing is a part of, and Chief Nightlinger presently is also. We have a 10-member board. Over to the right of that is the City of Champaign. Since they're the lead agency, we fall underneath them. We're technically City of Champaign employees, even though we dispatch for the county. That was agreed upon by the organizations early on. And then on the far left is the Emergency Telephone System Board. That's another 10-member board. And they pretty much make sure that Rantoul, that dispatches also gets their fair share of the surcharge that comes in, and they approve part of our budget as far as the surcharge is concerned on your wire line and your wireless phones. Originally, when I first got here, about four years ago, not only did we have a Deputy Director on the technical services side, we also had a Deputy Director of Operations, and that position oversaw the three shifts that actually do the communications or the dispatching, the telecommunicators. Because of budget cuts, we had, when that person retired, the board decided that we weren't going to backfill that position. That was about two years ago. If you notice, under Telecommunicator Supervisors, there's two in parentheses. When I first got here, we actually had three. And we had one on first watch, second watch, and third watch, or first or second or third shift. We now only have two due to budget cuts. We weren't able to backfill that position when that person retired. So we're running three shifts with two supervisors, and we do have a couple of lead workers assigned to each shift also. Policy Board, here's the makeup of it. As you can see, Champaign's lead agency, Dorothy David, being the city manager, sits on it with her Chief of Police, Anthony Cobb, and then Mayor Pressing also sits on it with Fire Chief Nightlinger and so forth. So those are the representatives, and I won't bore you and read them. And I have a copy, if anybody needs a copy of the PowerPoint, plus it's on displayed here. The rural police departments have one representative and also the rural fire departments. So that's the makeup of the Policy Board. Here's Emergency Telephone Systems Board, and again, they take care of the surcharge to make sure the surcharge goes to the appropriate places and that we spend it properly in our budget. Again, you're well representative represented on this board as well. In 2013, we answered a little over 233,000 calls that people dialed. We received about 97,000 911 calls. The balance of the 233 would be 136 non-emergency calls. And then out of all those calls that we took, we actually dispatched somebody out to a scene 160,000 roughly times. Here's what we need to discuss. This is the most important part of the presentation. If you didn't know, on all your hard lines at home or your businesses, we receive $1.50 a month on every hard line. Now, if you're a business, sometimes there's a rate of 10 to 1, so it's not exactly $1.50 for every wire line. But basically, if you own a residence and you have a phone there, we get $1.50. If you have a cellphone, we get .5875, so it's basically almost 59 cents on your cellphone. So the surcharge that we're estimating for FY '14 and '15 is going to be a total of 8, or $1.8 million. So you can see the wire lines at 930,000, which is declining, and the wireless has been stagnant, or leveled out at about 950, or 915,000. The user fees, that's another revenue source to keep us afloat and to keep the lights on and pay the bills. City of Champaign pays a little over $1 million, and this is for our projected budget that has not been passed, so don't be alarmed yet. City of Urbana is 579,000. University of Illinois Police Department, we dispatch for them, 351,000. Champaign Sheriff's Office, 524. Village of Rantoul, they're the member that we're adding in this year's budget. They have not been in our budget before, about 210,000. And then all the rural fire agencies cover the $120,000. So the total user fees are about 2.8 or 2.9 million dollars. So you can see our total revenue is about 4.7. Here's a breakdown of your user fees. The 579,000 is projected for '14, '15. Last year, you paid 451,000 for a difference of about 127,000. Why is there an increase? The increase is due to two reasons. The $73,000 is due to 16% across-the-board increase for all the users. We were in the hole. The wire line is decreasing. We probably didn't do a good job keeping our user fees at a level to cover some of the contractual raises for employees and some of the increased cost. And so we found ourselves in a hole about four years ago when I first got here, and we have a plan, a five-year plan to get out of the hole, which I'll show you here shortly. And then the other 53,000, the balance is, when we bring Rantoul on, we presently have three law enforcement agencies that dispatch from one dispatcher. And so we have, which will be the next slide here, I'll show you. On the left side, you'll see we have a minimum of five telecommunicators that work per shift. Champaign PD is standalone with one dispatcher. Urbana shares a dispatcher with the University of Illinois and the Sheriff's Office and all the rural police departments. And so when I first stepped on the property of MetCad, I said, "What? We have three law enforcement agencies and all the rural agencies sharing one dispatcher at the same time? Yes, that's what we do here." And I'm like, "Okay." I said, "You know, that's not where ..." I came from Sangamon County, and that's not what we did there, but, you know, I understand we're trying to save money and things like that, but I thought immediately there was an officer safety issue, having three agencies share the same telecommunicator." And I'll get more in detail on that. Fire departments share one dispatcher, and then we have two call takers that actually answer the phone, type the information in the computer, so the other three dispatchers can just dispatch the appropriate response, whether it's police or fire or EMS. Far right, hopefully July 1st, if Rantoul joins MetCad, which I believe they will. Champaign will still stand alone and have their own. Urbana will be with the University of Illinois. Instead of three agencies sharing one dispatcher, there'll be two. The Sheriff's Office and Rantoul will share with the rural fire, or excuse me, police departments will share one, and then the fire remains the same and the two call takers. The calls for service are balanced between, if you add up Urbana's calls for service with the University of Illinois, they're almost exactly the same as the Sheriff's Office and Rantoul. So that was kind of an easy decision on how do you split up the trio and where does everybody go? And it just made sense for the sheriff to keep the rural agencies and Rantoul at the time. So we, our minimum staffing would go from five to six. So obviously, there's a cost to hire additional dispatchers to cover the additional position, Here's a, really a complicated sheet, but the reason it's here, so if you want to look at any of the numbers later, you can. The top line, if you will, is what our total expenditures are over the, since I got here in '09. So as you can see, our expenditures are going up. There was a little blip in there where we had to put some money in for an upgrade with our Motorola radio system, but the level, it's pretty much leveled out, we hope, in the next couple of years, as far as what our increases will be in the future for user fees. But the blue line in the middle, you can see it started out pretty decent, but it's declining. That's our wire line and our wireless combined, and you can see that's going down. So we're a little over $2 million, actually $2.4 million when I first got here, and I think we're estimated at about $1.8 million. So you can see we're declining. Well, who makes up that gap? Because the union employees still want the raises, you still have to do maintenance contracts, and you still have increased costs to run the center. Well, unfortunately, it's the locals. It's the user agencies that have to make up the difference to keep us afloat, and that's what's been straining not only MetCad's budget and forcing cuts and things like that, but also the general funds of all our user agencies. Here's increase in user fees. In '09, you can see where we were at. You know, it was, it was, I don't want to say halfway decent at the time, but we were hoping to stay flat, but as wire line goes down, that's how the gap is made up. You see at the very bottom of it, there's parentheses with percentages in it. Our plan to get out of the hole, '12, '13, we raised user fees by 18%. '13, '14 budget that we're in now, we raised user fees by 17%. Projected in the budget year that hasn't been approved yet is 16%. And then next year, '15, '16 is another 16%. And then it goes to 6, and then after that, for the next several years, I believe it's the next 10 years, it's about 4.5%. We do a 10-year plan to try to balance out our purchases. Surcharge revenue losses, those are the years. Again, I came in FY '9, '10. The revenue from our wire line and wireless was about $2.4 million, and then it went down to 2.1. So you can see that first year, we lost about $314,000. FY '11, '12 compared to '9, '10 again, we lost 382, and then '12, '13, and so forth, for a total of, we're predicting this year, losing about $585,000 from our $2.4 million that we had in '09. So that takes us to a loss of about $2.1 million. And again, this is just our revenue loss. This doesn't include the gap that's widening every time we have to increase our paychecks for our union employee contract raises and things like that. So if we could just get back to '9, '10, that would help out dramatically, but that still doesn't solve our problem in the long term because our expenditures will continue to rise, as most of us know, with personnel cost and equipment. Deputy Director, like I said, we lost that position. Day shift supervisor position, we lost. We had some money. I think we had about $1 million in a building renovation that we pulled out of the budget, so that's not in there. None of our numbers are based on that. And then Station 6 in Champaign, they offered us some free space to put some old backup equipment in there. We're replacing our phone system now, so we're going to move our old system out there. And we originally had in there about $500,000 to just kind of be a startup to put some tables and chairs and consoles and computers and things like that in that center. Well, that's been pulled. So our only backup right now is presently Rantoul, which has about one or two seats that could accommodate us if we had to vacate our building for some emergency or disaster. What's pending, what's out there legislatively? I'm on the governor-appointed 911 Service Advisory Board. We're looking at what it takes to adequately function a 911 dispatch center in the state of Illinois, and we're looking at consolidation. So that report is due to the legislators, May 1st, I believe. So we have a few more meetings before that. So I see that as more of a long-term fix. The two bills right below that from Representative Bradley and Senator Sullivan, those are, on the back of your phone bill, there's 73 cents that comes off for 911. We get 58.25 of that. So there's about 14.75 that comes off. A penny of that goes to the ICC, Illinois Commerce Commission, to pay their bills to assist in the 911 projects. And then the rest of that goes into what they call the Carrier Reimbursement Fund. So if any of the carriers need any money to build out infrastructure to help them with improving 911 services, there's a fund there that's a set aside. And what we're trying to do in these bills is actually take that set aside for the carriers and put that back into the 911 system. Last year, the state of Illinois swept $10 million out of that fund that could have went to 911 dispatch centers. There's four states in the country that actually are allowed to sweep funds. Illinois, believe it or not, is one of the four. All the other states, there's a restriction. You cannot sweep 911 funds unless you're using it for another 911 purpose. So we're trying to also get that changed where we can't sweep. The problem with the governor's office or the legislature sweeping the funds is we're not eligible for federal grants. And so when next generation comes down the line and we need new equipment to text the 911 and so forth, there won't be any grants available to anybody in Illinois until we stop the sweeping. And unfortunately, everybody knows the state of Illinois, the financial bind they're in, and they're looking for money anywhere. But when they see that fund, that's an easy fund to sweep. The problem is, we're not able to get that funding that could help keep us afloat. And last but not least, as Mayor Pressing has coming up, came up with a grassroots campaign, which, by the way, she's making a lot of noise. I'm getting a lot of phone calls. I'm on our legislative statewide committee also. I'm the co-chair. And everybody's asking me, "What's Mayor Pressing doing?" And Mayor, I don't know if you want to discuss your resolution or if you wanted me to jump into that.
Well, I will, but why don't you finish your talk?
Okay, super. And again, we can get to hers, but I want to applaud Mayor Pressing for actually putting out some feelers and getting the message out, because we've been trying to tell everybody that we're struggling throughout the state. We're getting a lot of pushback from the Illinois Telecommunications Association, which is the Verizon's and the AT&amp;Ts and so forth. They don't want to see any extra taxes or fees on their phone bills, and so this is just another way to raise awareness, and hopefully, if it passes, it will help out Champaign County tremendously. Presently, 911, on the back of your phone bill, you get 73 cents. We get .5825. Carrier Fund gets 1375 that the governor sweeps, and then the ICC gets a penny. So over to the far right, our two bills, what we're trying to do is raise our 58.25 cents to 70 cents. In doing so, we're also going to try to take 2 cents and give it to some of the smaller counties with some of the smaller centers that are doing a lot worse than we are in Champaign County, so maybe grants or something like that, that hasn't been finalized. The ICC still gets their penny. The surcharge stays at 73 cents. There's no increase on the back of your phone bill. So the future, we're looking for 70 cents in those two bills. The present system, we're getting 58, so we gain almost 12 cents, which for Champaign County, roughly, is about $180,000. Now, remember, I told you we were about $585,000 short this year from the '04 numbers? So even though $184,000 would be coming to our coffers each year, we're still down about $400,000 from where we were four years ago. So I know I talked fast. You only gave me 10 minutes. I'll open it up to questions. I think I have a pretty slide there for questions or comments.
That was very fast.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Ralph? Diane?
Is the user fee that people pay, that cities pay, proportional to the number, approximate number of calls that come in on an annual basis, or how are those?
Yeah, on the law enforcement side, it's based on the number of officers that you have and the calls for service.
Okay. And when I talked to you on the phone today, you said that Urbana's contribution represents, or Urbana's calls for service represent 19% of all the calls. Is that the total calls coming in or the dispatched calls?
That is the dispatched calls for the police side.
Just for police?
Right.
Okay. And were you able to get an idea of what, and then what percent of our budget are we provide, of the budget are we providing?
Yes, and I have that sheet here, so I give you your exact numbers. Say that. Better pull those out somewhere. Yeah, you're basically at 20% calls for service, adding in fire for the center, and then you're paying eight, roughly 18 to 20% for the dispatch. So you're almost dead on, and we checked all the numbers, and ironically, almost everybody's dead on as far as their fees.
Okay. And I know the switch from landlines and businesses to something like voiceover internet protocol, like the UFI just went to, meant they pay lower fees, but they also pay less into the 911 system.
Yeah, VoIP is new, and the university went to that. I think there's other universities going to that. Instead of a hard line in the university, they downsized a lot of their numbers, and they went to a, pretty much a computer-based system. The problem with VoIP is kind of new, and a lot of what we know and we receive as far as money is on the honor system, and we're not sure we're actually collecting the exact amount we should be collecting. The carriers are not required to tell us, as far as Verizon's and Sprint's and so forth, how many cellphones that they have in this county or any county in the state of Illinois. So we just get a check from Verizon, and we have to assume it's accurate. We get a check from AT&amp;T, from Sprint and so forth, and there's no recourse for us. The carriers say it's a competitive disadvantage if they divulge how many wireless devices that they actually have in the county. They could lose customers and business and so forth. So we've been fighting that battle, at least for the four years that I've been here, that, you know, the Illinois Telecommunications Association wants all our numbers. You know, we're a government agency, so, you know, we give them our numbers, but they won't divulge their numbers. So I can't balance our books and tell you that we're getting our fair share from the carriers. I have to assume we are, and that's for the last four years, and then prior to that, when wireless started. So huge disadvantage for us to determine whether we're getting our appropriate revenue.
And one last question. Does the legislation that's pending or being proposed address the VoIP issue or the issue of the carriers not divulging any information?
Yeah, no, right now, the VoIP carriers are supposed to be remitting on their own. There's no legislation that mandates that they remit. And right now, we're in talks with the university, trying to determine when they transitioned over to VoIP, that we're getting our, you know, what we think is close to what we should be getting. So we've been working on that for a few months. The university's been great. They just don't have some of the answers, so we've been trying to deal with the carrier. Again, some of the carriers won't give us those numbers, and so it's been a struggle to figure out if we're getting what we're supposed to be getting.
Okay, thank you.
Carol?
I just wanted to ask, I saw that Rantoul is just coming online.
Correct.
What do non-member agencies do for emergency dispatch when they're not a part of MetCad?
They have their own dispatch center. They actually dispatch out of their police department. They have one person on duty. That person takes walk-ins for like a police report. They do a little records. They do some clerk things, and then they answer, they answer their phone calls. To clarify that a little bit, the wireline 911 calls go to Rantoul. If you're in Rantoul and you're on your cellphone, you dial 911, they come to MetCad, because Rantoul doesn't have enhanced 911. So they didn't pay for the upgrade, and so they can't tell what your location is. And so to make sure we know where you're at, we originally take the call, and then we transfer the call to Rantoul, and we let them know where the caller's coming from, the location and the phone number.
And then, if I can just follow up on the two bills, the House bill and the Senate bill. If those two pass, would those bills address the budget issue that you're currently experiencing without increasing or raising fees on users?
They would have an impact on assisting us, but like I said, we're short so much money, the 184,000, I don't want to say it's very little help, because I wouldn't turn down $10 if we got $10 more, but, or received $10 more. It's just not, it's a short-term fix, hoping the 911 Advisory Board makes a long-term fix, because it's just not Illinois. The way things were funded, everything was based on wireline, and it's going away. And so we need a new system, and we haven't been able to temporarily raise our fees on the back of a wireless phone yet to kind of offset everything until we can get into a better place and maybe have a new revenue source or, you know, a better way of doing business. And so that will not solve our problems, but if we got an extra $180,000, it would take pressure off the local communities and their general funds to help balance that gap that I said keeps getting wider because expenditures are going up.
So these two only deal with the 184,000, basically?
Yes, they only deal with the 12 cents, and we've been told from several sources, it's an election year, they probably won't wait, raise the fees on the back of your cellphone. So we're going after the 73 cents that's already there, so the customer doesn't have to have their phone bills raised.
Thank you. Anyone else? Eric?
So let's see if I understand this. Customers will not pay more from this bill, but the wireless, the provider will get less.
That is correct.
The provider will keep less.
Yeah, and a lot of, some of the bigger carriers don't even use the fund, because they don't need to, because they already have robust infrastructure. So their funds just sit there. And then out of those funds, the ICC determines, and I don't know what level they determine at, where they could give us a surplus. It's called an annual surplus that they could give to us. So one year, we received like $27,000 extra. Another year, we received $184,000 extra. One year, $57,000. I think there's a $29,000 in there also. So they tell us to budget zero, because they don't know how much is going to be swept and things like that. And so we have to budget zero, but out of that fund, we usually get some type of extra, if you will, surplus to help offset some of our cost.
Okay, Bill Brown's been waiting patiently.
So are all counties covered by some kind of 911 system in Illinois?
Yes, the state police pick up the areas that aren't covered. So anywhere you drive in the state, if you dial 911, it's going to go to somebody. The problem is, not everybody has the same level of service throughout the state. We have the highest level you can have here, and we're trying to maintain that as far as us knowing where you're at and so forth. But if you drive in another county, particularly a couple of areas down south, and you're with your family, you dial 911, they may not be able to know where you're at, where we can say who's calling, what phone number's calling, and where you're at. So the idea of the 2 cents that I showed you earlier in some of the smaller counties is to raise everybody to Phase 2. So if you dial wireless anywhere in the state of Illinois, somebody's going to know where you're at and know your phone number.
And then for the, I have a couple of questions. So for the landline fee, do you know how much that was when it started and how long ago that started? It's $1.50 now, right?
Yeah, it started out at 75 cents, a voter approved in the county, and then they took it back to another referendum when they realized the revenues were not enough to sustain 911, and the county voters raised it to $1.50.
Do you know what year that was? '96 or, it started in the early 90s?
I think the mayor does. I could find that out. It was obviously prior to my arrival here.
Okay, November 1988, 75 cents. November 1998, $1.50.
Okay. And then this, the new fee for the wireless is relatively new? Is like 2002 or something? Is that right? Or that the state started?
Did you say 2006?
I think 2006 on my slide.
Yeah, on your slide.
And that hasn't been raised since it started?
No. And that was just a supplement, declining wireline. That wasn't to solve the problem.
And then last week, I raised the question whether or not people who have, whose primary area of service is here in town, like 10,000 or 20,000 students probably that have home addresses where their, where their phone is billed to, or they're on a family plan or something. family plan or something. From what I understand, theoretically, they're supposed to be able to pay on their primary level of, or where they're, where they're using it. But in practice, it's actually tagged on to their billing address. So has there been any discussion of a better way to distribute that revenue that the state collects currently so that where the phones are actually being used is where the revenue would go?
Yes, that's been discussed. The problem is not every county has a university in it. We happen to have the largest university in the state in, in our county. And I think there's about forty-six thousand students annually that come. And there's probably a large portion that are coming from outside the county. And so they're paying wherever mom and dad bought the phone, or they did, their billing address is where the money's going. But the students are actually using our center. So we're not getting the revenue for the extra influx of students every year. But it has been discussed. The problem is there's so many centers that are struggling statewide. They don't want to hear where MetCad has a specific problem. And MetCad's trying to, you know, take care of that specific problem. They want to see all the centers taken care of first with some type of increase. Then they would support helping out the university counties that had a university in it, in it to solve some of their problems. So yes, I mentioned that because I'm on some of these boards. I mention that all the time. But I'm kind of a loner in that with a couple other people that raise their voice. So that probably won't be settled or fixed in any of these bills first, because there's too many centers struggling. They don't even have the level of service that we have today. So hopefully someday that will be resolved.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, would like to say that there's a unifying factor here, and that is the burden on the local governments, which really can't take these double-digit increases every year. And certainly when I saw that Urbana was going to get a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar increase, that really got my attention. And I talked to the MetCad board and said, you know, we really can't afford it. So what I'm trying to do is get a grassroots effort so that these municipalities and counties talk to their legislators to get their legislators to really pay attention to this problem. Because the twelve cents isn't going to do it. And so one of the, one of the things that was recommended by the staff here was that instead of having a uniform rate throughout the state, that we go with whatever the voters voted on the landlines, and that was technology that's, you know, a quarter of a century old, that that be extended to the wireless. And there are some, there are some difficulties here. I talked with the lady from DuPage County today. And DuPage County had voted fifty cents in for landlines. And then you get fifty-eight cents or fifty-nine cents from the wireless. So we're going to have to adjust things so that we can meet the different requirements of all these different parts of the state. I talked with the mayor of Quincy and they didn't, they weren't able to pass a referendum. So they're living sl- solely on the wireless. And that means that the county, Adams County and the city of Quincy are financing this whole thing. And of course, that's a real budget breaker. So, um, so far, I've talked with the sheriff of Cook County, the sheriff of St. Clair County, the mayor of Rockford, which is working with Winnebago County. And we're going to come up with some kind of a solution. But I'm just trying to get the public and the governments involved to put, to get the legislators involved in this whole question. Because the twelve cents would be nice, but it's not going to solve our problem. And we're, we're still going to be faced with double-digit increases that we can't afford. So I think if we raise the, the, the fee on the wireless, people would go from seventy-three cents to a dollar fifty. And that would be, what, eighty-seven cent increase.
About seventy-seven.
But when you're paying, when you're paying a huge phone bill, I think you can afford to pay eighty-seven cents to, to be able to have enhanced nine one one service. And as I said, I've gotten extremely good enthusiasm from all the sheriffs and mayors and police chiefs that I've talked with so far. And then today with the lady from DuPage County, Linda Zurwin, who runs the emergency telephone system. She pointed out that there's a real need for consolidation. And I, I think that MetCad is, is a model agency. Wouldn't you agree, Ralph?
Oh, absolutely. There's, there's only a few counties that are actually consolidated totally. Sangma County is where I came from. And we're one community shy of a complete consolidation. So the state's going to push not only countywide consolidation, but regionalization, which is what the state police just went through and they're closing their districts. So sooner or later, they're going to look, who can we combine with? And our goal should be, we want people to combine with us. We don't want to go to Ford County or Vermillion County and combine somewhere else. We are, like you said, I believe we're a model as far as being consolidated since seventy-nine and, and having partners join on, that we should be where people want to come to and they want to join. So I'd like to see us finish out this budget year, bring Rantool on, and then look for regionalization down the line, which I believe is coming.
Yeah, I think that we could, we talked, when I talked with Linda Zurwin, we talked about maybe there should be an incentive for consolidation. We could pass a law that you would get all these benefits if you consolidate it. Because apparently there's ninety-four different units in Cook County. And so there's, this whole thing needs to be looked at because it is based really on twenty-five-year-old technology. So anyway, any other questions for, yes, Diane?
If we don't know how many cell phones are out there, how do we know how much raising this to a dollar fifty per month per cellphone will generate?
That's a good question. And Ralph knows the answer.
Yeah, we have, in the check that we get, we also have what we call prepaid. So you can buy a prepaid phone or card. We get one point five percent off of any transaction. So if you pay fifty dollars, we get one point five percent off that. That comes in the bucket with our wireless. And so I'm kind of guessing, educated guess on how many prepaid are out there versus how many wireless are out there, because they're at a different rate. The, the wireless is fifty-eight to five cents and the prepaid is one point five percent, depending on what you purchase. And so it's just an estimated guess on that. But it'd be nice to have the exact number so I could be more exact.
Well, what is your estimated guess?
As far as what it would take to make us whole back to oh four?
Well, what that dollar fifty per wireless line would generate?
About one million dollars total. So we're short six hundred thousand. So it would bring in the six hundred thousand dollars we're short and an additional four hundred thousand dollars. Because sooner or later, we're going to be short again. Because if it just stays flat at that and just continues flat and we don't lose any more wireline, our expenditures are always going to go up. I mean, just, it's just the way it is, you know, today. So sooner or later, there's going to be a gap. So we're going to have to revisit it. But if we got the dollar fifty, that would sustain us, or we could actually reduce our user fees. So we could either freeze our user fees and one day catch up with that increase, or reduce them and we'd catch up with that increase sooner, if that makes sense.
Yeah, the way I see it, I think we have to have a, a solution now to the drastic situation that all the local governments find themselves in. And then have a set time to revisit this thing. Because I think ultimately what you would want would be a percentage that would go up. You know, the percent would be the same, but the money coming in would go up as the phone bills go up.
Right. And a, a point I can, I need to make real quick here. The surcharge money was never meant to run a dispatch center. It was meant to assist with nine one one. So it was always supposed to be local control and locals were supposed to pay into it. The problem is, we've gotten so far away from the surcharge part of it, that the locals have had to pony up or pay more money for their user fees. So I don't think surcharge will ever take our problem away.
Okay. Diane, did you want to say something?
I promise. My last question, and that is, we owe, we're going to owe a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars for next year. But, and I've heard something about, we can maybe defer that. But where, if we don't pay that one twenty-seven, who's going to pay that? And what's the expectation for paying that back?
Well, what I'm trying to do is make it be stretched out over a bit of time. And that's what they're allowing Rantool to do. There's a hundred thousand dollar buy-in fee and they're allowing them to stretch that out over five years. But I, we don't have the hundred and twenty-seven. So I'm not really counting on that we would necessarily pay it back. Because my real goal is to change the state law so that we would get the million dollars and everybody's rates would go down. And I hope to get that done in the veto session.
But if Urbana doesn't pay that one hundred?
It's for future expenditures. It's not for right now, keeping the doors open. It's a ten-year plan for replacing the equipment.
But we're expected to pay it this year? I mean, isn't that why we're falling short?
Well, we can, I mean, they're, they're agreeable with spreading it out over five years.
Who's, who's they?
Uh, MetCad people.
The, the policy board members have talked about this topic. And they've been kind of in negotiations to try to make this work. We have a great team at the board and they want to keep all the players together and all the pieces together. So they, I believe, unofficially, and they haven't voted on it yet, I believe if Urbana requests that type of loan or five-year plan, that it would probably be approved at the policy board level.
What, what I did was offer to lead this grassroots campaign in exchange for getting our increase spread out over a number of years, with the hope that if the campaign changes the state law, because the increase is based on two assumptions, that the state law doesn't change over the next ten years, and that the local governments can keep up these double-digit increases every year, which I think are two false assumptions and they're linked together.
So this loan is, is from the MetCad policy board and the other MetCad members?
Yeah, it's, it's really just a deferral of a payment. It's changing the, the ten years out to increase in the future rather than right all at once this year.
At no interest?
No interest.
And you don't expect we need to pay it back?
Well, I'm, that's why I think we have to change the state law. Because I don't think we can afford to keep up double-digit increases every year.
Just to be clear on that, I, I believe the expectation from the other policy board members is that it will be paid back. Now, whether it's paid back directly out of your funds or the savings you get out of future funds. But I believe the agreement would be that you would pay it back. That's just my understanding. It hasn't been voted on yet, though.
Right. But ideally, everybody's contributions would be able to be lowered if we got
Correct.
our dollar fifty. So we're going to get something. And we don't know what it is yet. But I know that the ten-year plan can't be carried out. Okay, Bill?
Um, yeah, just, it went by pretty fast. There was a graph where you showed sixteen percent increase for two or three years, starting this year, or starting last year.
It started a few years ago. And I'm not really sure how to go back on this, but I can try.
Did you, um, I was, I guess I was focused on the gra- graph. And I might not have heard what you said. Did you explain why that's increasing by sixteen percent over each year for five years?
Yeah, several years ago, we, we bought a radio system. We bought tower sites. A tower site's about a million dollars. And we purchased our own radio system instead of linking on to a statewide system. And that was about seven point five million dollars. Well, to keep that up and running, back a few years ago, it was projected that we were going to have to raise our user fees about eight percent a year, just to sustain the state-of-the-art, you know, communication system. We did not do that. The several boards along the way did not increase the fees. They were actually flat. And I think one year, there was even a rebate in there. And so part of the problem is, we didn't listen to those projections in the past. At the same time, wireline has been going down. So I think the chart that you're referring to is right here. So to get out of debt, when I first came here, we came up with a five-year plan to get out of debt. I wanted to start it sooner in fiscal year ten, eleven. That was my first budget year. But the economy had a downturn. And the policy board said, no, Ralph, we're not going to start it there. I tried to start it in eleven, twelve. Again, no, Ralph. As you can see, the, it was pretty level those two years again. So not only did we freeze ourselves there, we didn't go with the recommended, recommended eight percent increase for that radio system to sustain it. And so to get out of the hole and to have a level payment plan for the next ten years, we've cut our budget, we've not backfilled a couple of positions, and we have to make up that gap somewhere. So once we get out of the hole, I think after that eighteen, nineteen year, it should be four point five. If nothing else happens and we get no more increase in surcharge, it should level out. But we dug ourselves a hole, not anybody necessarily here. But we dug ourselves a hole over the last ten or fifteen years. And unfortunately, it's time to dig out of the hole if we want to, if we want to keep purchasing equipment and, and paying our bills.
Yeah, the reason we dug the hole was that the recession hit and we couldn't afford to give these big increases. So that was the reason that the board voted, I think, once, I don't know, I think we had a rebate one year and then we held
Yeah.
the line.
Nine, ten was the rebate year.
Nobody had the money to pay more.
Right.
Uh, Eric?
So whenever I hear talk about legislation for fees at a certain dollar amount, I always ask, and I've asked Naomi this many times, but I wonder about the, in the context of this, why, why have a flat fee as opposed to something that carries a COLA to account for, uh, to account for inflation? So that you don't have a flat fee for years and years and years and suddenly jump it up by twenty, twenty-five percent, whatever.
We, we can't get any increase, let alone a COLA. I agree with you a hundred percent. If we did get, let's say, twelve cents, or let's say the dollar, a dollar fifty, eventually that won't be good enough because our expenditures keep increasing. So you're right, we need some type of better system. But for the short term, we just thought if we get some flat increase, just to stop the bleeding, eventually the nine one one service advisory board might make long-term recommendations to fund us differently, like you just suggested with some type of COLA, to keep us afloat. So it doesn't fall on the backs of the, of the local general funds. And so that's probably going to be a recommendation that we're going to make from the board, the nine one one service advisory board. So that has been talked about.
And I think if we get enough counties and cities talking about this, we're going to come up with a long-term solution. But sometimes you have to do things in steps. And we do have our legislators supporting this. Naomi Jacobson and Senator Ferrex.
Yeah, I've talked to both of them and they are aware that we're struggling and they're willing to help. So.
Okay, any other questions for Ralph?
I have one request.
Uh, Mike Madigan.
Hello?
Yes, Mike, go ahead.
Yes, I have one request. Hey, Ralph, since I didn't have the benefit of being physically present this evening, could you please email your PowerPoint presentation to me? And I'm assuming the rest of the council members would like to have it too.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll just leave it on this computer. And I can also email it to whoever needs it. So it's, it's on here. I don't know if Jason or Chief Conley or somebody can, can disseminate it. I don't know if it goes to your computers.
Yeah, I think we should put it on our website.
That's fine. Yeah.
So that people, if they're curious about this, they'll know what we're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then my second comment slash question is, it sounds to me like, without having looked at your budget or, or knowing a whole lot about the history of your finances, it appears that you have taken several concrete steps to, to minimize expenditures. But I'm, I'm wondering, and I didn't have a chance to look this afternoon, is your budget online?
Uh, no, it is not. We haven't passed this budget yet. We're still in negotiations with this. But no, it's, it's not online.
Do you post your proposed, you don't, so you don't post a proposed budget online?
No, we do not. I'm not saying we can't do that, but we have never done that. So that's, is a new concept.
Yeah, I just think that if, you know, when you're, when you're, when you're coming to citizens and to locals for, for more money, I, I think it does you well to, to, it does you well to have those kind of things out there and on the web, where most people can easily access them. So they can actually look at your budget and maybe, and see your problem a little better. You know, you can highlight the things that you've done to contain costs.
Sure, that, that's not a problem. I bring that up with the policy board. And if they agree with that, I have no problems with that at all.
Yeah, I'm sure that we can do that. That's a good point, Mike. Thank you very much. Anything else? Uh, Charlie?
So I guess your comment you made a little, a few minutes ago raises a question I have. I think that the thing that Diane was alluding to was, you know, there's a ten-year plan to replace equipment. And you have enough funds to run the operation right now. You're basically developing a, an equipment replacement fund here. And that's what additional funds are needed for. Is that correct?
It's not just equipment. We, we, the city of Champaign's finance department sat down with us. And we're also looking at contractual raises. And so all those items that we know for sure are built into that budget. And the equipment purchases are also. Prior to my arrival, we had a capital, we had a capital list at the back of the budget, but no way really to fund it. We just kind of ad hoc funded it as needed. If you needed a three million dollar upgrade, hopefully you had it. If not, your user fees would have raised appropriately.
You've got a, a well-thought-out schedule then
Yes, for ten years.
for what you need. Okay, good. So, so that enables you to do some deferral on that and, and playing around.
Correct.
Okay. But you also raised the other point. Why, why would we save money if we were part of the statewide communication system and weren't running our own? And if, if we're going to continue running our own, why do we need to run our own and not be part of the state? In other words, consolidating and saving money on communications.
I think when they looked at originally jumping on the StarCom, the statewide system, the prices were so high that they thought they could have a better system that would be, that would be up a hundred percent of the time and, and not go down. If the statewide system goes down, we have no radio communications. And so prior to my arrival, this was purchased. So now I'm sitting on over seven million dollars worth of radio system. And so when it gets time for the next replacement, where it's going to cost us a lot of money, I think that's the time we need to look at, is it feasible? I know the cost for StarCom has gone down. And if there's going to be a big blip, I think that's as far as an increase to cover some improvement, we'd certainly have to look at that. But best case scenario, it may, it may be close to the same as far as what we're paying now.
Okay. So, so in other words, you will look at all charities?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. We've looked at it already. The problem is, when we talked to Motorola about joining, they were like, we don't necessarily need your, your towers and so forth. And so we'd just be shutting the lights off or turning the switch. And all that equipment and everything that we've all paid for in this county over the years would just be sitting there and sooner or later be outdated. And so that's a tough question. But yeah, we did look at the, the statewide system and we continue to look at that every year.
Eric?
So do you have, or can you generate a compelling narrative for how your system upgrades will translate into better response times? I mean, clearly, that's, that's the goal. So you, for example, one of the things that you do is you have very, very rapid identification of the location of the caller. And, and very, so, and, and, and that's really the goal. Is it, is it possible, as you're seeking, you know, the additional funds and justifying the equipment expenditures, to give some, I don't know what, what they would be, case histories, like you call in from such and such a place, and this lets you get a response X minutes faster?
Yeah, the, the system in place, we have two systems. We have a phone system, which we're replacing March twenty-six, by the way. And we also have a radio system. So the phone system is how we receive the nine one one calls. And then the radio system is separate. That's how we dispatch the first responders. And so our radio system, I believe, since its inception, has not gone down at all. StarCom has gone down where you just can't talk on your radio system. And, and I still believe in StarCom and I think it's a great system. Our system, to my knowledge, has never gone down, other than when we did a little upgrade in the last year. One of our tower sites didn't sink back in place at the right time. So we had some coverage issues where it was kind of gar- gargled a little bit and we couldn't hear it. But within a few hours, the Motorola fixed it and it was back up and running. So it's a reliability issue, I think, when, when they were purchasing that system. The phone system, technology changes all the time. And right now, our system is the old system is the old push-button system. The new systems that are being installed in all the dispatch centers are computerized. So, you'll have a, a screen and a keyboard. It won't be pushing a phone to answer a phone call. You're going to be pushing a keypad or using your mouse to answer it. It's a completely different system than our old, outdated system. You just can't get parts for our old system, so sooner or later, it won't be reliable. So, unfortunately, in our business, we have to be able to receive phone calls. We have to do our upgrades. We have to be able to dispatch first responders. And this Motorola system they bought into for the radio has been flawless. And so, I'm not saying they made a wrong decision or right decision back then. I think it was a dollar and cents thing and a reliability thing. So, at the time, that's, that's the move they made. But, as far as going backwards in our, our phone system technology, they keep adding things for technology. So, we really can't go backwards in our, in our system. I'm just saying that we have phase two in our county, where there's other counties that don't. They need to be brought up also. So, we're sitting really, really good here. You know, we pushed some purchases out, and we're trying to stretch, you know, some of our, our rotation of equipment and so forth. But, I'm in a double-edged situation here, double, because if I push it out and it breaks, Director Caldwell, why in the world were you brain-dead when you pushed that equipment out? If I don't push it out, Director Caldwell, why are you wasting our money with your plan and replacing it every 10 or 15 years? So, it's almost a no-win, and we've had, we've had great systems here that are almost flawless, and it works. So, it all depends on what level of service we want for this county. And I'm pretty proud of our dispatch center, and, and I didn't build it. It was already here in place before I got here, and I'm hoping we maintain what we have. But, I could cut corners. I, I could go backwards, but I really don't think that that's what we want in, in this county. So, I understand your question. I don't know that there is some formula that's going to say, "Push your radio system out another two or three years, and everything will be fine." It's, you just have to make some human judgment sometimes. And I think people before me have done a great job in doing that, because if anybody calls 911 here, it gets answered, and it gets answered in a professional manner. So, I'd like to sustain that if at all possible.
Diane?
I don't think we've ever had anybody here who's, who's flawless. I mean, it's, it's refreshing.
It, it really is. And now, with computer system, we're real worried, because we know our old phone system works, and it didn't go out on us, but we can't maintain it, because there's no more parts. So, we're hoping computers will still, our screens will still pop up, and we can still do that. And it's working in other communities. So, we're, we bought similar 911 phone system as other communities already have bought years ago. So, we're always going to bed at night, holding our breath and crossing our fingers, because we have to have our service up and running.
Absolutely. Okay, two, I, I was mistaken. I did have two more questions. One is, has the call volume increased significantly because of all the cell phones in use today?
Yes.
I mean, they're great public safety tools, but it seems like they're just driving more and more.
Yes, we get about 70 to 80 percent cell phones now over wireline. If some of you people in here that are a little bit older, or a little bit older, if you remember, if you saw an accident out in front of your house, you would have to run inside your house, get on your phone, and dial 911 many moons ago. Now, you don't have to do that. If that same accident happens today, there's going to be 25 people drive by that accident scene. We're going to get 25 phone calls on the same. Now, we have to determine, is that the same accident, or was there a gawker driving by, and now we have a second accident? And so, yes, we're receiving, for the same call we dispatch, we probably receive 10 to 20 times what we used to, because you don't have to run home. You don't have to run in your office to make that phone call. You make it within seconds on your ear, or on the side of your belt, and, or in your purse. And so, we're getting a lot more calls on the same call.
Okay. And then, the last thing, you, you frequently alluded to the cost of employees. Now, the dispatchers are part of which employee group, and they negotiate their contract along with the city of Champaign?
Yeah, all our employees at MetCat are city employees, they're city of Champaign employees, and the telecommunications fallen are ASME, which are also in with Public Works at Champaign, and, and the police department, civilian. There's a few front desk and records people that are also in that union. So, they're all negotiated together as one unit. And, and I sit in on that negotiating team for the city also, and I represent management and MetCat, because we're kind of unique. Our budget isn't, our budget falls underneath Champaign's budget, but it's completely separate. Surcharge money can only be spent on 911 functions. And so, our budget that's paid in by all of us with our surcharge, I needed a place, or they needed a place for our budget to fall, so it basically falls under Champaign, but it's kind of separate.
Thank you very much, Ralph.
You're welcome, and you're all invited to MetCat. If you ever want to sit along for any period of time, I'll give you a tour, or you can come in on a Friday or Saturday night when we're busy. I'd appreciate that. I'll open all my books up and sit you down and let you see what we actually do. Sometimes people forget, they see the firefighter on the scene, or the police officer, and they forget it takes a dispatcher to get that unit out there. And I'm awfully proud of the people that serve our community at MetCat, and thank you for this opportunity to, to speak to this group.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, I have, for petitions and communications, Reverend Evelyn B. and Bishop King James Underwood do not wish to speak, but they want to be on the record as concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision. Suez. Okay, Peter Folk. Your name and address, please, Peter.
Okay.
And you have five minutes.
Okay, excellent. Name is Peter Folk, address is 1407 South Maple Street in Urbana. I'm coming you, to you wearing four different hats. I am a City of Urbana resident. I'm the, I'm your cable commissioner and chairman of that, of that body. I am on your UPTV commission, and I am the owner of VoLa broadband. And this is one of those rare opportunities where all four hats, I can wear them all at the same time, because they all have exactly the same message, which is in support of your resolution about the municipal, ability of municipalities to roll out broadband. We are in a time where broadband is becoming more and more of a critical public, public utility, and it is not yet treated like a public utility. The, the municipalities understand its importance, and they understand that it has to be a locally managed and locally-owned infrastructure. And we, all four of the entities that I, that I am representing today recognize that, that value. So, I'd be happy to talk in more detail about it, but I, I think that message is really what I, what I wanted to convey to you.
Thank you. Any questions for Peter? Thank you for very much help that you've given us over the years.
Oh, my pleasure.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? We'll move on to unfinished business. I don't think we have any to deal with tonight. Reports of standing committees. Bill Brown?
Yes, the committee of the whole met last week on the 10th, and we forwarded several items to council, all with recommendation for approval. First is ordinance number 2014-03-021, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way with Campus Communications Group Incorporated. And for the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Charlie?
Please note that the correction that was pointed out last week has been incorporated.
Okay. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2014-03-022, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking, parking at all times on certain streets, Matthews Avenue between Church Street and Hill Street, and Matthews Avenue between Dublin Street and Beach Street. And we also have another companion one with that. Do we want to consider them both at the same time?
Takes just as much time.
Okay, we'll just do them separate. For the committee, I move approval of that one.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2014-03-023, an ordinance amending the Schedule N of Section 23-193 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, limiting parking on certain streets or public parking lots, Matthews Avenue between Church and Hill Street. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
A motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan? Mr. Madigan?
Hello?
Okay, this, this was an ordinance to prohibit parking on Matthews Avenue between Church Street and Hill. We're in the roll call right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Marlin?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
Ms. Marlin? Yes. She said yes. Okay, that motion. Mr. Roberts, wait a minute, I'm not done.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm done. Sorry. That motion carries.
Um, the next one, D, we, we referred to May 5, as I noted earlier. So, one E, Resolution Number 2014-03-015R, a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement with Urbana-Champaign Big Broadband NFP regarding billing, collection, and accounting services. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Brown, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
You only get one vote, Mike.
Next is ordinance number 2014-03-025, an ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate the tax levy for the general corporate purpose for the year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014. For the committee, I move approval.
Um, second. We have a motion by Bill Brown, seconded by Carol Ammons, to, to abate the tax levy, direct the county clerk to abate the tax levy. So, the, would the clerk please call the roll? I don't think so.
I think he's having trouble hearing us. Mike, are you having trouble hearing us?
Apparently, he is.
Let me, let me get Jason. Mike, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great.
Okay, before we vote, Carol Ammons would like to say something.
I just wanted to say, for the public's purposes, that the annual abating of the tax levy is not a raising of the taxes in this case. We're not raising taxes, property taxes, or any such thing. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Some people believe that when you do the annual abatement, that you are raising the taxes, and we're not.
What we're doing is holding the rate the same.
Correct.
Right. Okay, it's a motion and a second, a motion by Brown, seconded by Ammons. Would, is there any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Do I get to vote on that one?
If you want to, mayor pressing.
Yes. Well, that motion carried.
Next is ordinance number 2014-03-026, an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city of Urbana, 3101 East Anthony Drive, Patrick and Stephanie Funkhauser. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Next is ordinance number 2014-03-027, an ordinance amending the addendum to the Goodyear Real Estate Option and Contract, 202 South Vine Street, Goodyear. For the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is Resolution Number 2014-03-016R, Resolution in favor of adequate and fair funding for Illinois 911 systems. For the committee, I move approval.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Diane?
Just a clarification. There's no mention of a dollar amount of the fee. It just says, "Assess the same fee approved by voter referendum to all devices that access the 911 network." And as I understand it, the fee varies from one county to the next.
Right.
So, this would provide unequal amounts of revenue depending on the county that it.
This is merely a way of getting public discussion going and getting legislators contacted, that we have a huge problem here. There are many ways to solve this problem. But, what, what I've recommended for Champaign County is that we would be much better off if we could just assess the same dollar amount that we now have on landlines to any device that could access the 911 system. And as I said, there are counties in very different positions here. So, when the ultimate bill is written, it's going to have to take care of at least three different kinds of situations. And some people might argue that we should have a flat fee for the whole state, but I think that conditions vary between parts of the state. Chicago has $2.50. DuPage County has 50 cents, and we have $1.50. So, I don't think that having a statewide fixed number is necessarily the way to go, but that is yet to be determined. This is just a way of saying, this is something that we think would help Champaign County.
Well, so, as a talking point, this is basically a talking, a starting.
Right. This is just a grassroots thing. There's no, I mean, we're going to have to talk with a lot of people about how the actual legislation will be written, but this is to get a big public discussion going, that we have a huge problem in this state, and people rely on 911, and this is not something that should be decided by the phone companies. This is something that is a public safety issue and a big financial issue for every local government.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's motion and a second. That was Brown and Smythe, and Carol wants to say something.
Just to clarify, that the, the resolution is not fixing the actual fee or rate, but that has to be done at the state level in order to get cellphone companies to the table on this issue.
Right, yes, okay. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next up is Resolution Number 2014-03-017R, a resolution to support FCC efforts in protecting...
I can't hear you again.
You want to talk a little bit louder?
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
I can. And I, I, yes.
Okay. Resolution Number 2014-03-017R, a resolution to support FCC efforts in protecting local authority to build broadband infrastructure. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Was that seconded by Smythe? Okay. Motion by Brown, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Reluctant, yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.[1780.38]
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay, reports of special committees, I don't know if we have any. Reports of officers. Is there anyone who wants to give a report? Charlie?
I'll just very quickly state, passed out invitations to council members, and Mike, this is on your desk. Invitation to attend the Illinois Bike Summit. This is our third annual one. It's April 15th, Tuesday. You're invited to come for the opening session, lunch, whatever, whatever interests you on our dime. This is a chance to meet with other officials around the state and other planners and engineers who are looking at and building bike infrastructure and pedestrian issues as well. There's also a professional session in the afternoon that'll be good for continuing education credits. That's being put on by our own Cynthia Hoyle and Craig, I think Craig Walker from Alta Consultants, who also happens to have been the firm involved in putting together the state, the Illinois State Bicycle Transportation Plan, which will also be presented for the first time at the meeting. So, a chance to see what others are doing around the state. And there will be a session talking about Champaign-Urbana and the University of Illinois and efforts that have been done to get to the bronze level bicycle-friendly status that we have.
Okay, any other reports of officers? Okay, we'll move on to new business. The first item, mayoral appointments to the Urbana Traffic Stop Data Task Force. And I would like to make a slight correction here, that the last name, Chatto Pad, Padhey. It's a D instead of a T. It's C-H-A-T-T-O-P-A-D-H-Y-A-Y. It's correct in my letter to you, but it's listed incorrectly on the agenda. So, I wanted to make that correction on the agenda. So, Dural Cruz would like to talk?
Good evening. Dural Cruz, 2007, South George Huff Drive. First of all, I would just like to commend the work of the city council to get to this point in time in establishing this task force. I think it's a very important initiative. I also would like to commend the mayor for the appointments that she is making tonight to the task force. Obviously, all of the individuals are clearly outstanding and candidates who bring unique perspectives and expertise to the work of the task force. But I would like to suggest that individual talents and expertise do not necessarily translate into the best collective set of talents for a group assigned to a specific task. And in light of that, I would like to suggest there might be three concerns you should consider as a city council before you approve all of these names. And I would like to repeat that sentence again. Individual talents do not necessarily translate into the best collective set of talents for a group. And here's why I'm saying that. First of all, if you look at the nominees, the task force, for the task force, they reflect a significant U of I or academic presence. An academic presence, of course, should be welcomed and valued. It can play a very important role. But caution must also be taken because its presence can also influence a group to view its task purely as an academic research exercise, a case study, so to speak. That would be unfortunate in this case, in the nature of this type of issue. To ensure this doesn't occur, a balance of non-academic representation of voices, of community voices, must also be present. That is now clearly lacking. Secondly, only four of the appointees live in Urbana. This residential disparity of 64% should be a major concern to the council. Why? Simply because local residents have a better knowledge of the community, a more vested interest in the outcome of the task force, because they actually live in the community. It is their community that will be directly affected by their work. Adequate representation by local residents should never be underestimated or overlooked. They can talk to and solicit input from their neighbors. Non-community residents simply lack community perspective and ownership. In this case, once the work is completed, seven of the members will simply walk away and return to their communities. Is the city council suggesting there's not a simple majority of six competent, capable individuals living within the Urbana community that could represent a simple majority on the task force? The city council should protect Urbana's interests, residents' interests, by ensuring that any task force or committee doing city work should have at least a simple majority of local residents. It just makes simple sense. I believe the city council is entrusted with that responsibility on half of the Urbana citizens. And let me just ask. In this situation, if a city council member and two police officers are put on a task force, and eight other members are appointed but do not live in Urbana, and are asked to address strictly an Urbana issue, would the citizens of Urbana accept that representation of just a city council member, two police officers, and eight, nine residents? Well, in this case, you just have one more. One community representative outside of the city council police department and seven outside of the community of Urbana.
Yeah, one minute, Mr. Cruz.
The most glaring deficiency in the appointees is the fact that there are no local appointees representing the various Urbana organizations and neighborhoods who expressed an interest in working with the city. The current list of appointees does not or cannot adequately represent these missing perspectives or voices. Attempting to understanding true causes of traffic, traffic stop disparities is not simply an academic exercise. It requires the inclusion of qualified local people unaffiliated with the police or other city commissions. They too have meaningful and valid contributions to make to the work of this task force. And this segment of representation is sorely missing. Each of these three shortcomings can be easily addressed by simply approving three, two to three additional local individuals in place of two or three non-residents. Could I have just 20 seconds to finish?
Someone, yeah, please go ahead.
The diversity or skill level of the task force will not be diminished. Only the residential imbalance. The final report and recommendations are also likely to be better received and accepted by the Urbana community when the citizens of Urbana know all voices of the local community have been included in the process. Therefore, I ask the city council to defer action on this agenda item tonight until you've had adequate time to review the pool of candidates to determine if a better balance of Urbana citizen representation can be achieved. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
While I don't agree with all the things that you mentioned, I do agree somewhat in part that I think that there needs to be a little bit more time to review the people who've been nominated for the positions. It's great to have as thorough a representation of all the different strata of the community as possible. I haven't really evaluated each of the individuals that are on the task force that have been presented so far. I am kind of interested in getting more feedback from the community. And I did get two telephone calls today commenting that some people who would prefer to come and talk about this issue, which is important to them, aren't able to be here tonight for various reasons. So, I think just out of fairness to a larger group of the community, I would make a motion that we just defer this to our next city council meeting. And then bring this up again when people can. But in between time, I'd request that people would come in and comment either in support or, you know, to bring up whatever questions they have about the task force as it's being formed.
Second. Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. All those in favor, please signify by, I guess there doesn't have to be a vote. So, we'll just defer it. To the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I?
Sure.
In the meantime, can we see all of the applicants? Can we receive all the applicants that applied so that we can have a full understanding of who we were working with?
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance number 2014-03-028. An ordinance approving a final subdivision plat, Soccer Planet Second Subdivision.
Hello?
Well, hi.
Okay, this case and the next case are closely related. So, there's gonna be some overlap on the presentation here. Or I'll try to minimize the overlap. This case is basically a very similar request to something council saw in 2011 when the Soccer Planet facility was first created. There was a final plat and a rezoning. And this case is basically just to allow for expansion of that facility. They currently have plans to install more parking. And they are kicking around plans to add another soccer field to their property. They're not sure if it's gonna be indoor or outdoor in the long run. So, just wanted to pull up the plat here. Okay, so here's the Soccer Planet final plat. We'll talk about the zoning and stuff with the other case. The final plat is, it's the portion that comes after the preliminary plat. This property was preliminary platted with O'Brien Auto Park in 2001 and then reapprived in 2004. Here's the preliminary plat. And the area we're looking at is here along Willow Road in what was originally Lot 300 of O'Brien Auto Park. And just the new plat dedicates two acres north of the existing Soccer Planet facility. 1.871 acres of lot, and the remainder is right away to Willow Road. Access, they will be installing a new access drive along Willow Road. Here's the plan for their, what they would like to do. It's this right half has the new parking lot expansion. And this is, on this picture, north is to the right. So, this is Willow Road on the north. So, just adding these 20 some spaces and a driveway for now. Access, drainage, the developer is proposing to have sheet flow drainage to the south, to the existing parking lot, which already drains into the regional detention basin. Sidewalks for the case, the developer has agreed to sidewalk deferral rather than the previously granted waiver for the stretch along Willow Road. So, the developer will install sidewalks when the connectivity reaches the area. Utilities, the developer is going to construct sanitary sewer along the north, I'm sorry, along the western edge of the plat in this utility easement. And those are the major issues. If you have any answer, any questions?
Dennis? So, the property is not owned by Soccer Planet, it's owned by Frasca, is that correct?
Correct. The plan is to subdivide it so it could be sold to Soccer Planet.
Oh, so they're intending to actually make that purchase?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then what would, what would, what connectivity would be required to make the sidewalks appear on the property? For the development below or above?
Yes. Yeah, sidewalks coming approaching from the north or the south.
Okay, okay, thanks. Charlie?
Oh, Carol had, oh, okay. Move approval?
Okay, there's a motion by Charlie, seconded by Carol, and there's a question or a comment from Eric.
So, yeah, I'll just add that as a soccer grandfather who often goes down to Mattoon to see his grandson play indoor soccer, I think this is a terrific thing.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. You have another one here? Ordinance number 2014-03-029. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, Illinois. And this is to rezone a 1.87 acre parcel located north of Anthony Drive and east of Willow Road from Industrial 1, Light Industrial Office, to B3 General Business.
All right, this is the same parcel with a newly created parcel. It is just north of Soccer Planet. And to allow the use of indoor recreation facility on this lot, they're proposing to rezone from Light Industrial to B3 Regional, or B3 General Business. O'Brien Auto Park is already B3 next to it. And Creative Thermal Solutions across Willow Road is also B3. But the remainder of the tract is vacant and used for agriculture and still zoned Light Industrial. So, the proposal is to rezone to B3.
So, move. Second. Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next is ordinance number 2014-03-030. An ordinance approving and causing publication of the official zoning map of the city of Urbana, Illinois.
All right, this is the annual case where council reviews the map. It basically has just been updated to reflect the cases over the last year. We had four annexation petitions approved so far, or prior to tonight. One rezoning plan case, three subdivision plats, one new landmark. And we are adding a note to the Boneyard Creek District on the plat, on the, I'm sorry, on the map. The FEMA updated their maps for flood zones in the last year. So, we will need to evaluate and fix our Boneyard Creek District in order to be in compliance with that FEMA map update. But we haven't been able to do that yet.
Move approval. Second. Motion by Ammons, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Charlie?
Jeff, do we, you know, the note is nice, but should we get the FEMA stuff done before approving this officially? Or are we gonna do an amendment in the middle of the year?
Well, basically, this is just a formality. And the zoning map's a living document that is changed every time there's a case approved. So, we will be getting that, the Boneyard Creek District case coming in the next month or so.
Okay, so it's gotta go to plan, and it starts with Plan Commission, then? Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, that was a motion by Ammons, and who is the second?
Eric.
Jacobson.
Jacobson, okay. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next is Resolution Number 2014-03-018R. A resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance request by the Champaign County Zoning Administrator to amend the Champaign County zoning ordinance concerning heliports, restricted landing areas.
Would you like to explain this, Jeff? Is this one of those tricky votes where we have to vote no to vote yes?
That's correct. This is one of those tricky votes. The Champaign County Zoning Administrator is proposing a text amendment to their, to the county zoning ordinance. And the city of Urbana Plan Commission and council will review the proposed amendments and either vote to adopt a resolution of protest or vote to defeat a resolution of protest. In this case, they're amending their special use required, I'm sorry, standard conditions for special uses for restricted landing areas and heli- for special uses for restricted landing areas and helipads. Basically, they're adding a extra buffer between those uses and properties zoned conservation recreation, also a buffer to properties under different ownership, and additional buffer to any occupied buildings. And you can kind of see the proposed buffers here in this exhibit.
Carol?
Just, what is this, where is this going to be effective?
Yes, it's, there's nowhere in the city's mile and a half jurisdiction that we're aware of that it will affect. It would be for new, newly proposed helipads, or sorry, heliports and restricted landing areas. Restricted landing area is basically an airstrip where agricultural or private recreational planes would fly out of. And I think there was a related case last year in the southern portion of the county, which is why this whole issue was brought up to the county zoning administrator. So it might affect them, but there should be no effect on Urbana.
Diane?
Why is there that 365-day expiration date? It seems like we should just be doing this once and for all. What's the deal with that?
Good question. So what the county zoning administrator is proposing is to adopt some regulations that have been working for Kane County. But the, I guess the county zoning board is a little, they're not unsure of it, so they just want to try a trial basis of one year to see if the regulations work, and they would have to bring the case again in one year if they want to keep them permanently.
It's like a pilot program.
Yes.
Well, in that case, I would move to defeat the resolution of protest number 2014-03-018R.
Second.
There's a motion by Marlin to defeat it, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Dennis?
Jeff, I had a question before. There was, one of the, one of the elements in the proposal is that it's changing part of the runway that may, no part of the runway may be closer than, it used to be 300 feet, now it's only 280 feet from the nearest property. Was that really, I mean, it's only a 20-foot change, and what's the point of that? Was there a specific instance in the first case that induced this change because of where a fence was?
Unfortunately, I don't know, but.
It's just an arbitrary figure change that?
It's, yeah, something the county zoning board asked for.
Yeah, okay. And since this is a 365-day trial period, are they expecting to have a case come forward? Is there an expectation that we're gonna be dealing with this someplace in the county?
I would assume so, yes. But the zoning administrator was unclear if that's actually the case or not.
All right. Thanks.
Charlie?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same kind of thing. I think the situation is that there was a proposal that failed, so I'm wondering if this is, the 280 might be to adjust it so that that, you know, might work this time around. So I think, I think I know where the, there is a helicopter that's sitting covered down south that I pass on the way to Villa Grove on a bicycle. And so I suspect that that was the case that was defeated last year.
You soothed it out, didn't you?
So are they gonna deal with drones? Are we gonna have a drone zone?
This doesn't mention anything about drones.
Okay, just helicopters.
Yep.
There is a motion to defeat the protest, is that the, correct? Okay. Any other comments? Eric?
This is, this is half facetious, but maybe not completely. So does this permit drone helicopters?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Well, I'll, I mean, I'll go along and vote to defeat the protest, but I think that's an interesting, I think that actually is an interesting question. Do we, do we?
If I could answer that.
Okay, Charlie?
There, actually, there was, a friend of mine encountered a drone being used over agricultural field on the southwestern part of campus, and in that discussion, drones are currently regulated by the FAA, especially for commercial use. And so there's still a lot of, a lot of stuff going on there, and it'll be interesting to see, you know, whether, you know, as a home rule community, we may, we may want to take a look at regulating drones in some fashion.
We have not heard the end of this.
Yes. They will drone on and on.
That's right. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. And we have no further business, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.